I have called an order to this regular media of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees, October 2nd, 2023, at 6:00 period of KIA. Please join me in the fudge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government of the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval meeting agenda.
We have one change to the meeting agenda, and that is to add item H, which is a request from pine tree acres for extended hours. I will make the motion that we accept the agenda as revised. Second.
I have motion by Court Kinnell, second by Treasurer Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Provo minutes. Mount Court under public comment. I believe Ms. Rosio spoke about the solar panel ordinance, of the solar system ordinance.
So noting the change that we made. Make the motion that we accept the regular meeting minutes of September 5th, 2023, with the correction of public comment by L. Rosio that she spoke on the status of the solar panel ordinance updated. I'll second.
I have motion by Court Kinnell, second by Treasurer Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Public announcements. Public comment. All right, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board or being enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public still requests it prior to the meeting. In which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under agenda item number eight below. Proper consent agenda shall be by majority roll call both those present here.
Orders in the house, first thing I need to do is admit that I erred on last month's bills list and made a calculation mistake. The bills on the list were all correctly, however, they were, it was said that they added to 692,000 when in actuality it should have been $701,000. So we just need a motion to put into the meeting minutes for the auditors that we approve 701,24672 for last month's bills. I'll make a motion that we put in the minutes that we correct the approval of last month's bills to 701,24672. Second.
I have motion by Treasurer Hall, second by Trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Hall?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
And for this folks.
This month's currently to be paid $60,599.04, paid during the month to avoid fees and late charges, $391,989.72. The total for approval for September 2023 is $452,588.76.
I make a motion that we approve the orders of bills in the amount of $452,588.76.
Second.
I have motion by Trustee Gurley, second by Treasurer Hall. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kinnell?
Aye.
All right, item removed from consent agenda, public safety report. New EMS staffs sworn in this ceremony. Chief White.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board and the public at large, it's here tonight. Tonight, I get to do the favorite, the most favorite part of my job. About once a year, I get to come here and swear in new EMS employees, and then another time a year, I get to come in and swear in new firefighters. Certainly, I'm blessed because I go to work every day, looking forward to getting there in the morning. But this is certainly the absolute best part of it, is when we get to introduce our new members. So with that, I've got three new members to be sworn in tonight, and I'm going to ask them to come join me at the podium, as well as a member of their family who will be putting, who will be putting their badges on for them tonight. We have John Fadilla, Austin Thompson, and Logan Spence, gentlemen, and you can all come up with that, who's ever going to be putting your pin on. As EMS professionals, we regard ourselves as members of an important and time honored profession. As such, we administer to our employees at the conclusion of their probation period an oath. The purpose of this oath is to ensure our citizens that we will conduct ourselves in a manner that will be a credit to the township and the ambulance authority. This evening, I present these employees to you who will be receiving their oath. Colleagues, you can just answer the following with I do, if you'll raise your right hand. I recognize at all times, I am a public servant, and that ultimately, I am responsible for the safety and well-being of myself, my colleagues, and all citizens. I will accept responsibility for my actions by exhibiting honesty and integrity. I will promote diversity within our organization and ensure fair and open access to all who call for service. I will observe the highest principles of fairness and strive to meet those values which reflect honor upon the township, the EMS, and myself. I will seek to maintain and improve my professional knowledge, skills, and competence. Now, if you swear to follow and uphold all department SOPs, county medical treatment protocols, state and federal laws, as well as the state of Michigan and U.S. Constitution. Finally, do you affirm you will not permit or cause any employee or agent acting on your behalf to do anything which would constitute a violation of this oath? Family members, at this time, I'd like to invite you to put the probationary employees' badges on. Township Board members and citizens at large, on behalf of the Richmond Lennox and Township, the Richmond of Lennox Township Ambulance Authority, it's my privilege to formally present to you these sworn professionals, who I now attest are fully prepared to serve both you and our citizens. Gentlemen, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Before they all get out of here, at least, I want to introduce one gentleman in the room, because it's very seldom I can be in a room anymore with a gentleman who is so highly esteemed in public safety, who provided, provided as many years as I have to this area and this community as a firefighter and fire chief, and that is Logan's grandfather, Mar Spence, who's sitting here in the row. Mar, thank you. One other quick announcement, some more great news tonight, besides the ability to swear in our new employees. It's with a lot of pleasure that I am able to announce to the board tonight that actually, thanks to a information that was brought to my office by the township supervisor following this year's MTA conference, we were able to apply for a grant for firefighting gear, the turnout gear that the firefighters wear, in the amount of $10,000. We applied for that through the Michigan Department of Treasury.
Right.
And last Friday, I believe, we were, it was that we were told that we have received that grant. So at the next township meeting, I'll come before you with the actual bill for the turnout gear to get that approved, and then we'll fill, you know, follow the process to get that reimbursed to the township. So, great news. Thank you all for, you know, for allowing us to do that, and get that grant applied for it, and bring that money to the township that we don't have to spend out of tax dollars. The other item that I will, should have remembered, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for holding that up. This Sunday is the, is the Fire Department's Open Fire Prevention Week Open House. That's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., right at the main fire station on Gratchett Avenue. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend. We'll have lunch there in the form of, you know, some hot dogs and chips and things like that. It's a great demonstration, and I'll tell you, I get to a lot of these because the EMS participates in a number of them. And maybe I'm a little biased, but there are few as fun as Lennox. They have bounce houses there for the kids, the firemen really get involved in, getting the young people involved. So if you have children or grandchildren, it's a great opportunity to get them out and teach a little about fire safety. With that, that's all I have, I think, this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Under 10, new business, temporary occupation approval request, 65600, Gratchett Avenue. And Court, I believe this is...
We have two gentlemen here.
Yes.
Hello. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Ayad.
I'm Ray.
We own that property, and we are here requesting that temporary operation, approval for that. When we bought that location almost a year ago, we were aware that the previous owner was not compliant with the township, and we thought we could run the business either way. But after we took over, we got a notice that it's not compliant, so we start, we applied for it. The site approved, we applied to have that, and we, with the engineering here, and just the process taken so long, so we asked you to give us that temporary.
Offer that, the one section is staying, and is there until we get our, you know, final permit for the rest of the project. Mr. Supervisor, do you have anything?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. The plans aren't going under review right now, they're not in an approvable form, and they don't have all the permits in hand. Now, that's for the improvements part. For the existing part, we can't say yea or nay. It's totally up to the township.
I will put in, because Mr. Casson is not here, but I have spoken to him about it, and he is concerned that this is not something that the township has ever done before, and concerned about what it might lead to in the future if we were to let this operation happen this way.
Should we possibly send this to Township Council for legal review? Let's see what our liabilities are.
I would be happy to do that. We're asking, no, put the microphone on, they're yelling.
Yeah, here it is.
Yeah, I'm trying.
It makes the church talk easier.
Somewhere. I would be happy to review it. I give a great respect to Mr. Casson's opinion, that not having done it beforehand ever is a very, very risky maneuver, that I would not recommend, and that's before I might go review. But if you want me to, I will do a review. Be more formal, review under written opinion if you want. I'm telling you now that I would follow Mr. Casson's advice, at least for tonight.
No, we motion at this point that we follow Mr. Casson's advice and the opinion of our attorney, and to not approve this request at this time.
I second.
I have motion by Court Kinnell, second by Treasurer Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Nay.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much, Dave.
Item B, proposed ordinance prohibiting commercial vehicle traffic on dirt roads. So this is an ordinance after we asked the attorney's office for an opinion. This is an ordinance that my office worked in the hand of Mr. Addis here to create an ordinance that would prohibit unnecessary commercial traffic on the dirt roads. This has exemptions for obvious agricultural uses, those who use their work vehicle, take them home, and also package delivery services such as Amazon, UPS, FedEx. So tonight, we are bringing this ordinance up to the board for approval.
Loen, in speaking with you, we have been getting more complaints with through traffic.
Yes.
This is also something my office has received numerous complaints of, especially the Shell's road.
Well, it's kind of hard, because when you have 26 under construction all the time, it is the widest road to go through from one avenue to another. So there's a lot, but there's a lot of commercial businesses run out of license by miles. So would that, would, what would happen to, you know, that sound also?
Not if they're just there to deliver, not if they're, not if they live...
No, I'm talking, running their business out of their...
Not if they live there.
Yeah, if they live there and they're creating to and from or with their vehicle, they are exempt from the ordinance.
Gotcha, but what if the business is that address?
If the business is on the road, they are also exempt.
Okay.
Are we going to push our code enforcement officer over there to enforce this? How you going to do it?
This would be done by the Macomb County Sheriff's Office.
Will there be signs posted?
Our cars, or their additional cars?
Our cars. So this would be traffic violation, and we would have to purchase the signs as well. So hopefully, if we do approve this ordinance, I would ask Mr. Traum to go and see quotes for the signs.
A local community was not, was recently told that their signs were unlawful, that there was no through traffic.
I believe if you're referring to the Village of Duty, then they're a more special case, and I also believe that was an overzealous MSP officer.
Okay, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Mr. Addis, do you have anything to comment? Addis?
There's a statute of the state of Michigan that gives you the right to control the traffic in the manner you want to. Some of it is based on merely the type of vehicle, others based on the weight of vehicle. Either way, you have the right to create and enforce the ordinance. I cannot guarantee you that some people may not challenge it, but you certainly have the right to create and enforce the ordinance by, by state law. There's a statute that allows it.
If there is no further debate, I will make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance prohibiting commercial vehicle traffic on dirt roads within what extension.
I'll second.
I have motion by the Chair, second by Treasurer Hall. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kinnell?
Nay.
Hall?
Oh, you're, Mrs. Clifford.
I'm sorry. Clifford?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item C, outdoor praiser service request, I believe we are tabling this one until next meeting.
We are asking that this be tabled as the information we're, that is coming to us on this particular item comes in spurts on a daily basis, so this has to do with assessing, and Christine has asked us to table this item. I'll make a motion that we table the outside of praiser service request. I'll second.
I have motion by Court Kinnell, second by Treasurer Hall. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, item D, Custer Road Cemetery Fee Revision Proposal, Mr. Graymount.
Good evening, Board. This evening, the Board has a packet internally that has been just issued, and this is to go through the Custer Cemetery, Custer Road, Lennox Township Cemetery Fee Upgrade and Updates. There is a number of items shooter here within the packet. There's residential, non-residential. There's a lot of things tied into this. I would really implore the Board to be able to take some time, go through this. At this point in time, I would bring it back to the Board. It's been collected throughout the area. The Clerk's Office has worked extensively on this, bringing it back. But I would bring it back to the Board and ask you guys to either take your time and review it, or look forward to any questions and be able to answer that. As I say, every piece of this, the Clerk's Office has went through and updated. There's been significant changes over the years. This has not been done in probably 30-plus years that we can see. We've actually had our engineer look at the size of the graves. The grave sizes have changed. Our cost recently, just to put in bases for headstones, we literally have not made a dollar on that. And it's not about making any money, but when the township actually spends more than the cost, then we have a problem. And that's where we looked at it right away and said, we really need to update this. So I implore the Board to be able to take an opportunity to go back and review these numbers if they'd like, or if they feel confident enough of the information that is being presented this evening. Hopefully, you've got the chance to review it, and any questions, I'd be more than happy to help answer, or I'm sure Madam Clerk would also be able to answer, because they've worked extensively on this project. But I think they've done a fantastic job, and at this point in time, I would bring it back and recommend to the Board for their comments or above.
I will add that I spoke to both our DPW Superintendent and our engineer, and asked for their recommendations as far as what they thought that would be a fair way to assess this. I do have a sheet that shows an average cost, and I did have, you know, one of them said, well, we could work with the average and just charge that. And then it was further suggested that maybe what we need to do is consider a grave price, consider an open and closed price, and leave the foundation, headstone foundation, to current charges, and charge them at the time that the headstone is placed.
I'd like to add...
It's just information to ponder as you're pondering it, as those have been some suggestions as to how we could look at it.
I'd like to add, just for the public's information and the Board ensures awareness, that we had a set price for a grave, which included everything, open and closing, the vault, the base, all of that. And by the time we got done, the township was completely upside down. If you looked at today's cost to put just a foundation in for the headstones, you know, we recently ran across this, where we had a double foundation go in, and I believe it was just under $800, Mr. Traum?
Oh, that's right.
It was just under $800, and the grave prices, we're at $5 when we're done. So I do ask the Board to consider Madam Clerk's work, the intent, and consider the changing of the fees for that cemetery.
If there's not a discussion of the motion, we may order.
Make a motion that we, each Board member takes this information back regarding the Custer Road Cemetery Fee Revision, and consider the proposals, and we will make a decision next month. I'll second.
I have motion by Court Kinnell, second by Treasurer Hall. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item E, early voting resolution, Madam Clerk.
I've been issued a resolution before the Board this evening regarding the early voting, which was voted in November 8th of, November 8th of 2022. It was proposal number 22-2, in which the voters in Lennox Township, as well as across the state of Michigan, voted to have nine days of early voting prior to each statewide and federally run election. I will read the resolution now. It's basically, we need to show the state that we, that we are complying and agree with the early voting. Whereas, the voters in Michigan on November 8th, 2022, approved the passage of proposal 22-2, which in part entitles voters the right, once registered, to vote in each statewide and federal election in person at an early voting site prior to Election Day, open for nine consecutive days, beginning the, beginning the second Saturday before the election and ending on Sunday before the election, for at least eight hours each day. And whereas, the early voting precinct for all Lennox Township registered voters will be held at Lennox Township 63775 Gratchett, Lennox, Michigan 48050, as it meets polling place requirements. And whereas, the early voting precinct for state and federal elections will be open for nine consecutive days, beginning the second Saturday before Election Day, through the Sunday before Election Day, during the hours of 8:30 to 4:30 p.m., 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m. And whereas, the township clerk is allowed to set additional hours for early voting, add additional days of early voting, and allow early voting for election that is not statewide or federal election by this resolution. And whereas, all early voting dates and times will be posted sufficiently 45 days prior to every election to notify voters, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lennox Township Board of Trustees approves the establishment of the Lennox Township Early Voting Precinct, which will be located at the Township Building, located at 63775 Gratchett, Lennox, Michigan 48050. If approved, this resolution is going to be 2023-9. If approved, this resolution is going to be 2023-9.
If there's no discussion, I believe the motion is in order.
I will make a motion to approve the early voting resolution as presented by Clerk Candell.
Second.
I have motion by Treasurer Hawn. Second by Trustee Clifford. And if any, clerk please call and roll.
Honn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
All right. Item F, Christmas tree light proposal machine.
Good evening, members of the board. I had requested three estimates from three different companies for a proposal of basically renting Christmas lights and putting it on the 25-foot tree so that we could do a tree lighting ceremony for Christmas. And in front of you, you should have the three attached estimates. I actually had a good situation coming out of Hamlin Pub in the beginning of January. They were taking down lights, and I asked them if they would decorate a 25-foot Christmas tree. So, the gentleman that I spoke with works for Let It Glow. He gave me the contact information, and I maintained it, kept it, and sent quotes in, or requested quotes. They actually came in the cheapest. They'll come, they'll put it up, they'll require half down, and then pay me when, you know, when they're done putting it up. Pardon me. So, yeah. And then they'll come down, they'll take it down probably in January. So, it'll go up probably sometime in November.
So, we have in front of us three estimates ranging from $1,231.
It's a big difference. Blinko, the last one, I had, the guy actually came out to look at the tree, and I went to call the next day to, you know, check for the follow-up, and the guy got relieved of his duties. I will tell you that the owner came out unannounced, which was very professional of him, but he's also the one that came in the highest.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Christmas tree lighting in the amount of $1,200 to Let It Glow, as recommended by Nishian.
Second.
I have motion by Clerk Candell. Second by Trustee Clifford. And if any, clerk please call and roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Honn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item G, holiday office closure proposal.
Well, since there's only 84 more days until Christmas, ahead with it. And I have to get the tax proposal ready. I need to know when we're going to be closed for Christmas. So, my suggestion is to be closed starting at 5:00 on Thursday, December 21st, and reopening on Tuesday, January 2nd.
So, just to fold it off.
We did the two-week slasher, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the-
Yeah, but it really didn't fail.
Yeah.
Way failed, yeah.
So, I don't have a problem with that. Seeing how we're discussing that, I believe, since we're forcing this closure on our employees, how some don't even have PTO because they're new, I don't, I believe that we should pay our employees throughout the closure. It's in the budget. We have enough cushion for it. And we also set the rest of it when we closed for July 3rd.
We've done that before, though. Without pay.
Without pay, yes, but we recently just did this on July 3rd.
Right.
How can we come back not even four months later and say, no, you guys have to take your PTO? Some of our staffers don't even have PTO because they're too new.
I'm not opposed to it.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the holiday closure proposal and close the offices between December 5th, or... Yes. Sorry, not December 5th. Between December 21st, starting at 5:00 in the evening, and reopening on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, with a normal hours and pay our employees for the week that we are closed.
I'll second that.
I have motion by the chair. Second by Trustee Clifford. And if any, clerk please call and roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Honn?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item H, Pine Tree Acres Request. Mr. Grabow.
Good evening, board. This evening, Item H, which was an add-on, was brought to our attention from the operations manager at Pine Tree Acres that they are working on basically putting together their additional operations facility. The email that we received was a request to allow Pine Tree Acres to start construction for the next few weeks. And this is only going to be a few weeks because they have a very limited time due to the weather conditions, Eagles permitting, and all the permitting that came out from the state, which kind of reduced the request time. This is requesting and allowing the contractors to work on weekends and to minimize the project timeframe in order to be accurate. They would basically be working from sunup to sundown. Now, we will put something on the website, but trying to put this in a very short, small box. They're basically zippering together a section that they added on. And the area that they're working in is completely surrounded. So, sound operations and the dirt moves that they're doing, if 2% of the public even hears it, will be amazing. This is, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the site itself, but the new attachment that they put, where they moved all the offices and everything, the attachment is to the east of the property of the opening area that was a future development. They're now zippering that in and bringing it online so that all of the pipe work, everything is done. They're just moving dirt, and this has to happen within a very short period of time. So, they are asking permission from the board as in the past, it's been brought forward to the supervisor's office, then brought to the board for final approval. But they have a very short window of time on this. So, with that, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments.
If there's no discussion, I believe the motion will be in order.
My only concern is that, do we have something we can go back on if we start getting complaints about noise early in the morning or late in the evening? Or, you know, I mean, it's fine and good for them to tell us that it's only going to be 2%. And there's no reason to not believe them, but if we have people calling and saying things, do we have any recourse? Is there...
I'm sure. They've been always extremely responsive to us. They've been very, very good. Their citizenship as a corporate customer is beyond belief. I think we would have an instantaneous response. The point of them working from sunup to sundown clearly gives us a timeframe right now. So, 6:30, 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. That is pretty much the time.
Same as the trucks.
I'm sorry.
Same time as the trucks go through.
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we approve the extension of the hours for Pine Tree Acres until such a time as winter hits and they can't work anymore or their work there is complete.
I have motion by Clerk Candell. Second by Treasurer Hawn. And if any, clerk please call and roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Honn?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right. Public comment. All right. Close session.
Make a motion that we enter it to close session at 7:09 p.m. Second.
I have motion by Clerk Candell. Second by Trustee Gurley. And if any, clerk please call and roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Honn?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
They return from closed session at 7:31 p.m. Second.
I'll wait for Carol to get back to her spot there. So, I have a motion by Clerk Candell. Second by Trustee Gurley. And if any, clerk please call and roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Honn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
This time.
7:31.
Go ahead, please. What's your problem? Do you have one time when we came on a closed session?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're good now. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to identify and provide defense for named defendants in the recently filed lawsuit.
Second.
I have motion by Trustee Clifford. Second by Treasurer Hawn. And if any, clerk please call and roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Honn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Item 13, call from the board. Anyone? All right. 14 adjournment.
Make a motion we adjourn at 7:32.
Second.
I have motion by Trustee Clifford. Second by Treasurer Hawn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here none? Motion passes. We are adjourned.